And now it's time for Make It Happen with David Lormes. He is an award-winning insurance expert, bestselling author, and business owner talking about how to make your life, your career, and business better. Here's David.
Welcome, everybody, to today's episode of Make It Happen with David Lormes. And I'm very excited because I got to meet and invite Councilmember Ellen Cohen to be a part of the show today. Welcome.
It's my pleasure. Thank you, David, very much.
Well, we're all very excited to have you here. And as you know, this show is about people telling their stories that help them to get where they are, successful people in life, whether it's monetarily, or they have survived cancer, such as yourself, and tell those stories to help motivate and inspire other people. And I think you have a pretty good story, from what I've researched. And to start off with, aren't you from Ohio?
I am, and I really, really appreciate that because my late husband was from Montreal. And I can't tell you the number of people who think I'm from Canada. And while I really like Canadians, and they're very nice, I am so proud to have been born in Cleveland, Ohio, and spent basically 20 years there, and then moved to Montreal.
Yeah. Do you have any relatives that are still there?
I do. I have a few, yeah, that are still in Cleveland.
Yeah, good, good, good. But then you moved to Canada, right?
That was it.
And was it because you got married?
Well, when I was, this is probably longer than you want, but when I was about, when I was 13 or so, I wanted to go to an overnight camp in northern Ontario. I had a cousin there. It was a coed camp. And my father particularly said, you know, "Well, I don't know. What if she goes there and ends up meeting a Canadian and falling in love and getting married and moving?" And my mother said, "Don't be ridiculous. Thousands of American girls go to Canadian camps, and they don't meet someone and fall in love." And I was 13.
Right.
And at 20, I moved to Montreal and married my Canadian boyfriend that I met when I was 14.
Seriously?
Absolutely. And I went to that camp with a friend of mine from Cleveland, and she married and moved to Toronto with the boy that she met at camp, too.
Really?
Yeah, her parents were less than thrilled as well, because they weren't keen on their daughter marrying and moving to Canada either.
Were they low on women, then?
Why, do you think it was, you think it's such a stretch that he went after me? Now, I'm totally insulted. With 55 minutes to go, I'm out of here.
Just kidding. But that's amazing that both you and your girlfriend ended up marrying Canadians.
Yeah.
And how long did you live in Canada?
We lived there about 17 years. We moved here in 1977.
Okay. But while you're in Canada, isn't that the time that you experienced a health diagnosis?
Right, right. I was in my twenties, and actually, I was taking a shower and just felt what I thought was a lump. And now, remember, this goes really, this is 1969.
Yes.
So nobody talked about cancer in public. Nobody said the word breast in public. Certainly, nobody said breast cancer. I mean, it was just on the surface, in terms of talking about it. But I did go to my doctor, and he, you know, he didn't poo-poo it, but basically, he said, you know, "You're young, and there's no history in your family, and I'm sure it's nothing." And they just did what they still do now, which is like a needle biopsy, and they expected to find, you know, milk gland engorged or something.
Right.
And I could tell by the look in his eyes when he was doing that, that he didn't find what he thought he was going to find. And I was diagnosed with breast cancer.
Wow. How did you feel about it, then?
Well, in those days, I was actually in the hospital when they did the biopsy, and I had to stay in the hospital for a number of days. And when they finally came in to tell me, it was so unusual, they had to actually do a frozen section and send it to Boston to be sure that what they thought they saw was actual. And when they came in to tell me, then my first thought was, you know, "I'm out of here. I mean, I'm just going to jump." In those days, hospital windows opened. I just figured I was going to jump out, and then I looked, and I was on the fourth floor. So I figured, "I'll break my legs, and I'll have breast cancer." So I, I don't know, I could, that's, I mean, I was scared, but at the same time, I didn't know anyone, and I never knew another woman who had ever had breast cancer. And they said, "This is what we're going to do. I mean, we're going to do a mastectomy, and that's it. No chemo, no radiation." Because there was no chemo, there was no radiation.
Wow.
Really, there was none. And so I thought, "Okay, well, then that's going to solve the problem." You know, I really, I figured that was it.
Yeah.
And in my case, I was, I'm knocking on what I think is, but actually, it's probably plastic. But, you know, that was it. So I went ahead and said, "You're the doctors. Go ahead and do it."
Wow. That's amazing, because even now, with today's technology and all the medicines they have, it's still rough on people. So I can only imagine what you were going through when you couldn't even talk about it.
Yeah, I think I was just lucky. I was just completely naive, because I didn't have, you know, I couldn't turn to a history of other people. I just thought, "Okay, this is the diagnosis, and this is what you do. And once you have the mastectomy, the cancer's gone, and you'll be okay." So now, we know so much more. And I think that, in many ways, of course, the prognosis is much better now, but we do know so much more, that there's, I think there's a very high level of anxiety amongst women, and some men.
Was there a stigma associated with being a survivor, then?
Well, you know, I started a program called Reached Recovery. And essentially, what that was, I heard about this program. It had been started in New York, and it was a simple concept, very simple now, in light of what we have. But a woman who had had a mastectomy and was doing well, hopefully, five years, there weren't that many of us who were five years, but would go in and talk to a woman who was going through it, and help her with how to, you know, "Where do I find a prosthesis? How do I tell my children? What's my sex life? What's my husband going to be like?" You know, those kinds of questions.
Right.
When I started the program in Montreal, in order to start it, I had to get the message out. And so, yes, there was a stigma, because the news, my late husband's cousin was in the newspaper business, and she asked me what was going on. And I was telling her what I was trying to do. And when, and by the way, when I was trying to do it, I went to speak to the Canadian Cancer Society, and I told them about the program, and they said, "It sounds great, but where, you know, where did you learn about it?" And I said, "In New York." And they said, "We don't want any program that was started in the United States." And then I went to speak to the surgeons, who met once a month, and they were, in those days, all men. And they said, "We don't want any do-good women in our hospital."
Seriously.
Yeah, seriously. And in fact, one of the doctors actually said, on the way out, he said, "You know, losing a breast is no big deal."
Really?
So when the cousin, my, my late husband's name was Lyon, when Lyon's cousin asked about the program, what I was doing, I was telling her of my frustrations, and she said, "Well, why don't we do an article on the paper?" And when you, going back to your stigma question, so my question was, "Well, I don't know. You know, if you put my name in the paper, everybody's going to know I had breast cancer, and if you put my picture, everybody's going to see it."
Right.
And then I decided, "Hey, I didn't do anything wrong."
Right.
So if this is the way to get the message out, let's do it." And that's how we started the program. But there was a stigma. I used to feel when I'd walk in a room, people were looking to try and see if they could figure which side it was, and, you know, whatever the, you know, the deal was.
Well, that's pretty gutsy to do that in that time.
Well, you know, you play the cards you're dealt, and there were, I never had another woman to talk to. I really would have loved to have been able to ask my questions. And Lyon was very supportive, and the children were too young to understand exactly what was going on, but it was like, "No other woman should have to go through this. So if I can, if there is a program already in existence, happens to be in the States, but, and it works, then, you know, why not?"
Exactly.
I never thought of it as being gutsy. I just thought, "I don't want another, another woman to have to figure out what's going on here."
Well, I think that's amazing. Is that program still in place there?
It is. I don't know if it's still called Reached Recovery, or it's been subsumed by a larger self-help program, but the programs exist. I mean, when we left Montreal in '77, the program was going in every, almost every hospital in Montreal, in French and English.
Wow. I imagine they didn't have mammograms during that time, either.
No, I do, they may have, but I didn't, I didn't have one.
No, I think those came out regular later.
Uh-huh. You may be absolutely right.
Yeah. My mother has survived breast cancer herself.
Oh, good.
And you're right, things are so much better, but it doesn't take the fear away. Fortunately, there's not a stigma like it was, but...
No, and since your mother's had it, and, you know, I would say to you, you have to make sure that, seriously, that you examine yourself. Men do get breast cancer.
That's right.
And, you know, if it's in your family, it's in your family, so be...
That's right. That's right.
Do the right things.
Well, I think it's wonderful that you survived, because you helped so many people.
Thank you.
But, so after that event, then you moved to Texas in 1977, right?
Exactly.
Yeah. So tell us how you picked Texas.
I knew that.
You threw a dart.
Well, no, no, actually not, but with two things. One, I was an American, so it meant that we could leave Canada and move to the United States.
Yes.
And Lyon could come in, sort of like a war bride, you know? I could bring him in on my back. And, and we looked around the country and tried to figure out where we would move to. Lyon was a CPA, and there was some reciprocity with Texas and Louisiana and others. But the answer, the reason I'm hesitating, because really, the answer is somewhat spiritual. There's an expression, "Coincidence is God's way of remaining anonymous." And we chose Houston because it was booming, and, you know, all of these things. But the fact is, three years after we moved here, Lyon was diagnosed with a tumor on his spinal cord.
Oh, my gosh.
Which was not operable. And he was given 18 months to live, but because we had moved to Houston, and because of our medical center, he lived 18 years, 18 quality years.
18 months to 18 years.
So why did we move to Houston? I can give you all these answers, but the fact is, we moved here because something else was happening.
Yes, you were meant to come.
That's right.
That's right. Well, that's, that just gave me chills hearing that story.
Gives me chills when I think about it, too.
Yeah, that's amazing, and hopeful for a lot of people. Don't, don't take your first diagnosis, you know?
That's right. That's right. And not only that, but, you know, live in Houston, where the best medical minds are.
Absolutely.
Between MD Anderson and Methodist, and Memorial Hermann, actually. Lyon really not, was not just kept alive, I mean, he lived a real quality life.
Yeah. Well, so when did the idea of going to work and politics-type stuff enter your mind?
Well, you mean, going to work, I mean, I worked in Montreal. After I started Reached Recovery, that was going, the hospital that I started it at, offered me a position as Director of Public and Patient Relations. Although, I was the first mother of all my children's friends to actually go and take a paying job.
Yes, right.
Wow, that was really unusual back in those days.
Yes, it was.
In terms of working, you know, my first job, essentially, here was, was with the American Jewish Committee. So I was the Executive Director there for 10... It was great. It was great, because it put me in touch with people like Kirby John Caldwell, and Bill Lawson, and Bishop Fiorenza, and, you know, the kinds of great minds and leaders in this city that were making things work. I mean, look, Houston never had race riots, and I think that's largely due to the, particularly those three gentlemen, and where Houston was.
Yeah.
So working for a human rights organization is, was a great deal for 10 years.
And that sounds like it might have started the basis for you in your political career to continue to fight for human rights. Would I be correct in that?
I think so. I mean, I wouldn't have, I never thought about it then, but I think absolutely, you know, for sure.
And you were there for 10 years.
I was.
And what made you leave that position?
Well, I was asked to sit on the board of an, a fledging organization called the Houston Area Women's Center.
Oh, yeah.
And I was on that board. And in those days, people thought, you know, we were a group of wide-eyed radical feminists, smoking funny cigarettes and wearing headbands. And, and some of it was true. Not all of it was true, but some of it was true. And then when it's, when the Women's Center started to grow, I was offered the position as Executive Director.
Well, we want to hear more about that when we come back, but I want to remind the listeners that they can tweet their questions at @DavidL2490, or private message them on Facebook at Make It Happen with David Lormes. And we'll be back after these messages with the amazing Ellen Cohen.
The Fort Ben Playbook is live this summer for an hour and a half, every Thursday, from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m.
Oh, yeah, exactly. I think Coach Fleming has different expectations, therefore, you've got to look good, you play good, you feel good.
I've seen Cody Cunningham's tape from this spring. He seems to have more confidence inside the pocket.
Join Aston Jean Lewis and M.A. Pay as they continue their coverage of Fort Ben ISD Athletics, only on kbrzsports.com.
Do you trust your insurance agent? Hi, my name is David Lormes. Anyone can sell you insurance, but I have the unique perspective and experience of being a former claims professional. It's when you need to use your insurance that you really depend on a seasoned professional, where customer satisfaction is number one. I can be reached at 713-688-8669, and all calls are rolled to my personal cell phone after hours. You can also visit lormesinsuranceservices.com. Hey, I have to sleep at night, so I need to make sure you're covered.
Performance Pilates and GTC Gym and Training Center in Greatwood are your answer to getting spring break swimsuit ready. We offer private and small group personal training and Pilates classes. GTC now with 24-hour access. Call 281-224-0013. More information at greatwoodtrainingcenter.com or performance-pilates.com.
KBRZsports.com is your home for Fort Ben ISD Varsity Sports, All Sugarland Skeeter's Away Games, Fort Ben Playbook, Fort Ben Spotlight, Coach's Corner with Fort Ben ISD Athletic Director Philip O'New, Fort Ben Food Rampage, and Skeeter Nation. Check back often at kbrzsports.com for the latest scheduled events, activities, and outings in the Fort Ben community. KBRZ Sports, kids, communities, and commerce.
Hope you don't hear that sound at the Fifth Annual Great Grown-Up Spelling Bee on Thursday, September 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the University of Houston Sugar Land. Support the Literacy Council of Fort Ben County by being a spectator bee. The cost is $45 at the door. Sponsorship and underwriting opportunities are available and range from $75 to $5,000. For more information, visit www.grownupbee.com, or contact Christina Guerra at 281-240-8181. Your support can change a life.
And we're back with Councilmember Ellen Cohen of District C. And before we continue on talking about where you moved after the AGC and the board, I'd like for you to tell us a little bit, who all is in your district? Because we were talking during the break, that a lot of people don't realize what district they're in, or who their council member is.
Right. My district is District C, and it's not because my last name is Cohen. It works out beautifully, but it's not actually that. District C, if you kind of picture, in the southern part of, if you kind of picture Meyerland, and then go along Braze Wood, through Southampton, through the Montrose, up through the Heights, through Oak Forest, through, up to, to really, north of TC Jester and 290, Tidwell, really, actually, Tidwell and 290. And it has about 215,000 people in it.
That's amazing.
It's, even though it's diverse in terms of its, the miles, you know, from one end to the other, the fact is, it's very neighborhood-centric.
Yes.
You know, the people in Oak Forest have the same issues as the people in Southampton as has the people in Meyerland.
Right.
They really care. You could be standing at your front door in any one of those areas and be concerned about the same things, so...
Isn't Garden Oaks part of your...
And Garden Oaks is absolutely part of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because Oak Forest and Garden Oaks are just like sisters neighborhoods.
Right, right, right. And right, you know, and then they're hot areas. I mean, they're growing like mad.
Yeah.
And they're, you know, bordering onto the Heights, and so it's all, it's a great district.
It's huge.
It's a terrific traffic.
If you look at the map, it's really a lot of area.
Yeah.
So, okay, so let's get back to your story, because I was really, I'm really interested in it. You were telling, talking to us about how, when you were on the board, you were offered a position.
Uh-huh. So I was on the board of the Houston Area Women's Center, and I was offered the position of CEO. And I thought, you know, this is great, because I am of the Jewish faith, so I spent a decade working for the American Jewish Committee, which is this country's oldest human rights organization. And now I'm being offered a position to work on women's issues, and being a woman, isn't that great? You know, the two things that make me who I am, I was able to get involved in.
Right.
And so, the Houston Area Women's Center, in those days, we had about, about 50 staff and a budget of about a million. And I left 18 years later, and we had a staff of 120 and a budget of about 6.2 million.
Oh, my gosh.
And...
You did something right.
Well, we did something right, but, but the sad part is, we grew because of the issues. You know, the Women's Center deals with survivors of domestic and sexual violence. And what was happening is, when I, when I went on the board, and certainly when I was the CEO, issues that, we were dealing with the mindset, and this may be hard for, for you and for the gentleman who is...
Eric.
Eric Allen, who is running all of this.
The producer.
The producer, thank you, to believe. But in those days, and I'm talking about 1980, in those days, people thought that if a woman was raped, it was because of what she was wearing and what part of town she was in.
Right.
Or if she was being beat up, it's because of what she must have said to prompt it. So we had a huge job to do to change mindsets. And the neat part of it was, by the time I left, we had had our first male board president, we had male staff members, you know, the men got it as well. And we had to, because 50% of the population were the victim survivors, and the other part of the population had to take responsibility for mostly being the perpetrators.
Let's talk about that for a minute, because there are a lot of people who think that these kinds of crimes and violations are on the upswing, where I'm kind of of the belief, they were already there. You just couldn't talk about it or come out about it. What's your belief about that?
You're talking about rape, and sexual assault and domestic violence. I, there are statistics, I don't have them. I would, I would doubt that there is an increase in the population. I think what's happening is that because it's happening, because it's happening amongst every group, so I don't want to just point to athletes, as we just read in the paper recently, about some football players. And, you know, it happens among athletes, it happens among lawyers and accountants and shop owners and, you know. But the fact of the matter is, it's, I think most men have been able to eliminate that boys will be boys mindset that happened years and years and years ago. And, and again, well, you know, if she drank too much, you know, so...
She was asking for it.
She was asking for it, right. Or if she said yes and then said no, she didn't really mean no.
Yeah.
I mean, I think most of the men your age, and you guys must be in your 20s.
I'll take that.
I knew, I knew that, I know. Okay, 30s. So most of the, you know, you all know it, you know, you've talked about it, you have friends, female friends, and, you know, years and years ago, you guys smoked in locker rooms, too. I mean, you smoked all over the place, right? Now you can't light up, take a cigarette and light up in a locker room.
Right.
And the same attitude is, you made jokes in locker rooms about somebody that might have been assaulted, and, you know, what a funny joke it was, or "I punched my wife in the mouth last night." Now, you're not going to find guys making those kinds of jokes. They really aren't. They know it's not funny, and a huge percentage of the male population is very much working to eliminate domestic and sexual violence, so...
Now, did you only deal with women that were victims?
Thank you for asking. No, we, obviously, clearly, women, then, and children.
Yeah.
And men. I mean, there were occasions where men were battered or sexually assaulted. In the sexual assault instances, it would have been more by same-sex partners.
Oh.
And on occasion, you, you know, there may have been male-female battering, but for the most part, females were the victim survivors.
Wow. And how long did you stay in that position?
I was there for 18 years.
Wow.
Yeah. I wasn't a counselor. I mean, I, you know, I was a paper pusher, but, but I saw...
But you were CEO, and you oversaw the whole thing.
And I did. And what was interesting, too, sometimes, is occasionally, I would get a call, and I, and someone would identify themselves as a friend of mine.
Wow.
And it would be someone I would know, who, even though they knew that I wasn't a counselor, they knew my job.
Yes.
And they would say, "I need help."
That must have been very satisfying to hold that position, knowing that you were helping so many people, and that even your friends could come to you.
It really was. Not all that long ago, but six months ago, I was at a party, and it was being catered by a company. And a woman came by and was offering some hors d'oeuvres to all of us, and I didn't know the company, and I didn't know the woman. And she pulled me aside for a second. She said, "I want to tell you something. Eight or nine years ago, I was a client at the Houston Area Women's Center."
Wow.
And I spent several weeks in the shelter, and, and because of the help of the women, someone was able to give me, and I now have a great job, and I'm going back to school, and, you know, that happened frequently. I mean, I would be places, and somebody would take me aside and said, "You don't know me, but the Women's Center saved my life." And, boy, you talk about feeling good.
Sure. And even though you're not there anymore, it's, it's still coming.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and that sure is, has to be gratifying.
It is, believe me.
So what made you want to leave that position?
Oh, well, I actually stayed there. And I was recruited, my husband passed away, and about two years later, I was recruited, my husband passed away in 2003. A couple of years later, I was recruited by two men I know to consider running for elected office. I'd always been interested in politics, but I never, I could never consider running for something like the state legislature while my husband was alive, because although he did live a very quality life, I couldn't be in Austin and have him in Houston, and issues come up. So there's no question, I never even gave it much thought.
Right.
But these guys knew that I was, had always been a little bit interested, and they approached me, and at first, as most women do, you know, when, if you're in a room of men and women, and somebody says, "Okay, who might be interested in running for office?" The women sit on their hands and spend time thinking, "I don't know enough, I can't, I won't." And the guys are like jumping out of their seats, raising their hand, "I'm ready, I'm ready to run, I'll run, I'm all set." So my first inclination was to say no, and then they talked to me again, and I said, "Well, show me the demographics." And it was a district that leaned Republican, but there was an opportunity for a Democrat to, to give it a good shot. And I thought, if, this goes back to what made me leave, but if I, you only make $7,200 a year as the state legislator, $7,200 a year, not $72,000 a year, and not $7,200 a month. So I was not in a position to leave my job at the Women's Center.
You'd have to be on food stamps.
That's right. Don't laugh. Somebody told me once, there were several, there were several representatives, many, many years ago, who actually had to use food stamps.
Seriously.
Yes, seriously. But, so I figured, "Look, I'm going to run. If I run and win, I'll be the state representative, and I'll still be the CEO of the Houston Area Women's Center. If I run and lose, I'll be the CEO of the Women's Center."[1618.88]
Right.
So it was a, what the heck, why not?
Yeah.
So, um, I was very fortunate and had fabulous volunteers and staff and I ran and I won. And for my first term, I stayed on as a CEO and, because you serve five months every two years in the legislature, even though there's a lot of meetings going on. So I stayed in my job at the, at the Women's Center and served in the legislature. For my second term, I decided, based on the district I represented and all, that I really needed to be focusing on this full-time. And I was able to manage and retired from the Women's Center.
Ah, so how long were you in the legislature?
Two terms.
Two terms.
Two terms of the legislature.
And that was enough?
No, it was, actually, I ran for a third term, but I was republically and Tsunamis swept out, so, um, uh, yeah. I would have been serving up there, but it also would have been a different time. When I was up there, there were 79 Republicans, 74 approximately Democrats. And so we all had to get along, we had to work really closely to get legislation passed. My third attempt, which I didn't make, it ended up being 101 Republicans. So the Democrats were, you know, really, 101 is the super majority, so you don't, you almost don't have an opposition.
About what year was this?
Um, this was, I served in 2007, 2009, and was gone in 2011.
Wow.
2011.
Wow. So what does Ellen Cohen do next? And we'll find out about that because we have to take a station break. But I want the listeners to know that they can tweet us at DavidL2490 or private message us on Facebook at Make It Happen with David Lormes. And we'll be back with the lovely Ellen Cohen after these messages.
Just because it's summertime doesn't mean KBRZ Sports is off the air. This summer is jam-packed with broadcasts of all Sugarland Skeeter Away Games and your favorite shows, including the Fort Ben Playbook, Food Rampage, Fort Ben Spotlight, and the newest show, Make It Happen with David Lormes. So click your browser on your PC or smartphone on over to kbrzsports.com. KBRZ Sports, kids, community, commerce.
Hope you don't hear that sound at the 5th Annual Great Grown-Up Spelling Bee on Thursday, September 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the University of Houston Sugar Land. Support the Literacy Council of Fort Bend County by being a spectator bee. The cost is $45 at the door. Sponsorship and underwriting opportunities are available and range from $75 to $5,000. For more information, visit www.grownupbee.com or contact Christina Guerra at 281-240-8181. Your support can change a life.
Do you trust your insurance agent? Hi, my name is David Lormes. Anyone can sell you insurance, but I have the unique perspective and experience of being a former claims professional. It's when you need to use your insurance that you really depend on a seasoned professional where customer satisfaction is number one. I can be reached at 713-688-8669 and all calls are rolled to my personal cellphone after hours. You can also visit lormesinsuranceservices.com. Hey, I have to sleep at night, so I need to make sure you're covered.
Tired of going to the same restaurants every week? Want to know what new eateries have opened up recently? Tune in to the Food Rampage as Dominique and Priya dish about their favorite restaurants. Catch us live every Tuesday at 3:00 p.m. on kbrzsports.com and iHeartRadio for the live show. Be sure and follow us on Twitter and like us on Facebook at @FoodMonsters. Join us as we rampage through the Houston area.
Looking for a way to be involved in Fort Bend ISD Varsity Sports? Want to sponsor a team, game, or hear your child's name mentioned during a Fort Bend ISD Varsity game? KBRZ Sports can broadcast your business or personal message for a reasonable price. Contact our sales department at www.kbrzsports.com for more information on how you can be part of Fort Bend ISD Sports. KBRZ Sports, connecting Fort Bend County business owners, families, and Fort Bend ISD Varsity Sports.
And we're back with Ellen Cohen, city council member, District C here in Houston. And right before we went to the break, you had left the legislature and you were about to tell us.
Actually, the legislature had left me.
I was trying to be nice. And you were going to tell us what you did next?
Well, that was, I came back to my office because, well, I lost the election, I was still serving for another couple of months. So I came back to my office in Houston and about a week or two later, my chief of staff at that time, Tammy, came in and said, we're getting some phone calls. And I thought, yes, you know, people were calling and saying, we're sorry, you know, how things worked out. And she said, no, we're getting phone calls about people wanting to know if you'd run for District C for city council, because Ann Clutterbuck, who was a terrific council member, was term limited. And so it was open. And I had, I had lived in C since the time we moved here, since '77. And I thought to myself, wow, now that is really exciting. I really got hyped up on it. So I didn't have a lot of time. I had like six weeks before I, before the end of the year and had to declare in Janu, I think January, that, you know, that I wanted to run for District C. So there wasn't a lot of time weighing heavy on me.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, it was great. It was great. And, man, it was an exciting campaign, too. So, it was.
What made it so exciting?
I had four opponents. That made it really exciting. And we won without a runoff, so that made it even more exciting.
That's crazy.
Yeah, it was very exciting, yeah.
Wow, well, good.
But, and the last time, we didn't have any, so that was even more exciting.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so, um.
Well, that's good.
It's two different kinds of campaigns.
Well, and since you've been there, I know that you've been involved in some amazing things, but I'd like to talk about this latest thing that you were involved with, and that's HERO. And that's the Houston Equal Rights Ordinance that was passed. And you were a big proponent of that, I understand. So tell us about that.
Well, I was, I was very fortunate and I was the whip on that. And so, you know, what that means is trying to talk to my colleagues and others and answering their questions and getting them involved. The Equal Rights Ordinance, and in this case is HERO, which is a great acronym, is a slam dunk for me. I don't, I can sit here with you and I've had a lot of discussions with a lot of people. I don't understand why people oppose it.
Right.
And it may be because they don't, they don't quite understand all of it. And I understand that. I mean, I think there's questions out there. People think we already have it. And just to be clear, if you don't mind, if I can just take a second and talk about...
No, please do.
You know, at the federal level, we do have equal right protections for, I think, 13 groups, you know, based on religion, sex, sexual, excuse me, religion, sex, ethnicity, you know, with all of the different protected classes, except for GLBT communities. But at the federal level, we have all of those. So let's assume... ...bar in Houston. And this is a young hip bar, and I'm obviously not a young hip person. And I'm told essentially that there are no tables, there is nothing available, because I'm older and they don't want old people in their bar. They want to keep it looking cool. If that happens today, I can take it through the federal system. I can say, I was refused service at this bar, restaurant, or store because I'm a senior.
Yeah.
And what that means is I got to hire a lawyer, it's going to cost me a fortune, I'm going to have to go through the federal judicial system, I'll be 300 years old before it ever gets heard. But I can do it. What worse, what the Equal Rights Ordinance here says is that if the same thing happens to me and I'm refused service, I can go to the inspector general's office here and I can say, I was refused service at that restaurant or that bar. And in my case, my issue can be taken up immediately, at least in a reasonably short period of time. And it might be that I don't want to sue the restaurant, it was just the manager was insensitive and didn't realize what was happening. And the inspector general will bring us together and I'll say, look, as long as it doesn't happen again, I get it. But even if there is an issue and the restaurant has to pay a fine, okay, but it can be done expeditiously. And we're adding in the Equal Rights Ordinance, the gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender community. So we have added that. But, and we know that the way it stands right now, although the decision will be made in January, right now, it appears that it won't, this won't be going on for, on the agenda, the ballot in November. And we'll get a different decision, we'll get a decision in January. But the fact of the matter is, if people vote to overturn because they have an issue with the GLBT part of it, what they need to understand is they're voting the whole thing out.
Yeah.
They're voting the whole thing out. So that means that if, that seniors won't have their case heard, that minorities won't have their case heard, that veterans won't have their case heard in an expeditious manner. It's not just a question of throwing it out because you have an issue with the GLBT community. So, and it's the fourth largest city in the United States.
I mean, really.
I mean, really, with the greatest number of, variety of ethnic groups. And we're attracting Super Bowls and we're doing this and that. You know, how, I don't understand how you could turn around and say that we're not going to have an Equal Rights Ordinance. We're the only city of any significant size in Texas that doesn't have it. And we're one of the only cities of any significant size in this country that doesn't have an Equal Rights Ordinance.
I found that amazing, particularly in Texas. I mean, we have a gay mayor in Dallas and San Antonio.
We do?
Yeah.
We have a lesbian mayor?
Yes, we do.
My god, that makes news.
She hides it well. No, she doesn't hide it, I'm in awe of her. But, you know, with all the other cities that have the ordinance and then Houston doesn't, it's just incredible.
Well, but now, you know, city council passed it.
Yes.
And all, all being, all being, well, obviously, how I feel, I mean, it will go through and, and it'll be something that we'll look back on and say, well, of course, of course, it was the right thing to do.
Sure. And was there a lot of opposition?
Well, it passed 11 to 6, so, um, I don't know if you consider that a...
Well, I saw that number.
I'll leave that up to you to...
No, I saw that number and I was wondering, how could even six people be against it? I mean, it doesn't make sense, because I'm sure those six council members have minorities or gay people or veterans or older seniors in their district. May not be the majority, but still.
I would think so.
Yeah, not protecting the interest of everyone. So, but I'm glad that you were the whip and you were involved and it got passed. I think that is a huge notch on your...
Yeah, and, and we'll just have to see what happens in January when the court hears it. But I think the big issue is if you do have a question about it and you, you're not sure about it or exactly, you can certainly get in touch with my office and there are, we can put you in touch with other groups that, you know, have speakers that will come out and talk to your group.
That's a great idea.
To your religious organization, to your civic club, and talk about the issue and, and clear up any misinformation you may have.
Sure.
And hopefully respond in a thoughtful way to your concerns.
How can they get in touch with your office?
Um, they can go to District C on the website and...
Sure. Well, you have your own website, EllenCohen.com, right?
Yeah, that's not the one you want to go to, though.
Okay.
You want to go, we want to go to the city one and, um, that's the best way. And, and we'll also, we'll be able to put them in touch with groups.
Well, and if you Google Ellen Cohen District C, you will find that city website. And there's lots of information available regarding her and her past and what her often...
Well, not my entire past.
No, not the secret stuff.
Not the secret stuff. The secret stuff is a secret.
That's right. This isn't Oprah.
I mean, thank, yeah, don't ask me that question about, what's the one thing you've never told anyone that you wanted, you'd like to share with me today? No, that's...
That's right. But it's, it's easy to find you if they Google. And there's all ways to contact you and find on your website. So what are you working on now in the city council?
Well, there's a number. I mean, we just finished the public transportation issue around taxis and Uber and Lyft, so that was something we just finished.
So what was the vote on that?
That was, there were two members who weren't there and I actually can't remember the exact final, I don't remember the exact numbers on that. I think there might have been five in opposition, I just can't be 100% sure on that one. And now, as was mentioned in the paper day, we're talking about pensions and, you know, how we're going to be handling that. I mean, that's a, that's a huge piece of it.
We'll talk about that a little bit. What, what, what exactly do you have to talk, okay?
But, but, I mean, that's an issue that the mayor is working on, that largely, at this point, her comments have to do with the firefighters' pension system.
Oh, okay, okay.
And, you know, we know we're, we're facing a debt and we've got to figure out how to deal with it in general, or how to deal with it.
Well, a lot of companies are dealing with that, so that's not new for the municipalities. Well, we didn't really get to talk about the fact that you are a mother and you've got two children. Why don't you tell us about those?
Well, that's very kind of you to ask. I am a mother and I'm also a grandmother. And I have, I have four grandsons and one granddaughter and, and they're all spectacular.
Where do they live?
Uh, my daughter Marcie and her husband live in Houston.
Oh.
My son Eric and his wife live in Aspen.
Oh.
Yes, well, somebody has to live there.
Yeah, that's terrible.
And somebody has to go visit, so, you know, it's just the way it works out.
He pulls, it works out.
Yeah, whatever, you know, summer skiing, whatever. And it, it's a trial, but, you know, I, I do it anyway.
That's good.
And my family is political in terms of their advice. They're well-read, they, they are terrific in terms of the discussions that we have. And I'm very, very fortunate. And I'm particularly fortunate in that I also have a mother who will be 100 this coming May, and she is phenomenal.
I can't believe it. And you were mentioning during the break that she even works out?
Yeah, she works out once a week. She tells me she's tired at the end of about 55 minutes.
Only 55 minutes?
Sometimes she even has to take a little nap before she plays bridge that night, so...
Oh, my gosh. Well, I think that just means your family has good genes.
I hope so.
But I want to remind the listeners that they can tweet their questions, because in our next segment, we're going to ask Ms. Cohen those questions. You can tweet them at DavidL2490 or private message us at the Facebook page, Make It Happen with David Lormes. And we'll be back after these messages with Ellen Cohen.
Performance Pilates and GTC Gym and Training Center in Greatwood are your answer to getting spring break swimsuit ready. We offer private and small group personal training and Pilates classes. GTC now with 24-hour access. Call 281-224-0013. More information at greatwoodtrainingcenter.com or performance-pilates.com.
KBRZsports.com is your home for Fort Bend ISD Varsity Sports, all Sugarland Skeeters Away Games, Fort Bend Playbook, Fort Bend Spotlight, Coach's Corner with Fort Bend ISD Athletic Director Philip O'New, Fort Bend Food Rampage, and Skeeter Nation. Check back often at kbrzsports.com for the latest scheduled events, activities, and outings in the Fort Bend community. KBRZ Sports, kids, communities, and commerce.
Some of our most successful insurance agents in the Houston area are in the multicultural market. In fact, over 40% of our market here is Hispanic or Asian, with both growing rapidly. There has never been a better time for bilingual individuals to join our team of business owners here at Farmers Insurance District 30. Contact us at 281-596-9730 or at www.farmersdistrict30.com and come join a winning team.
Do you trust your insurance agent? Hi, my name is David Lormes. Anyone can sell you insurance, but I have the unique perspective and experience of being a former claims professional. It's when you need to use your insurance that you really depend on a seasoned professional where customer satisfaction is number one. I can be reached at 713-688-8669 and all calls are rolled to my personal cellphone after hours. You can also visit lormesinsuranceservices.com. Hey, I have to sleep at night, so I need to make sure you're covered.
Hope you don't hear that sound at the 5th Annual Great Grown-Up Spelling Bee on Thursday, September 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the University of Houston Sugar Land. Support the Literacy Council of Fort Bend County by being a spectator bee. The cost is $45 at the door. Sponsorship and underwriting opportunities are available and range from $75 to $5,000. For more information, visit www.grownupbee.com or contact Christina Guerra at 281-240-8181. Your support can change a life.
Time and money, the two things an entrepreneurial startup or a business owner of a small to mid-sized business always need more of. iCoach Business Pros, a partnered affiliate with Growth Coaching Systems Network, has answers and solutions to better utilize time and not waste money. Excellence has no limits, and neither should you. Contact iCoach today at 713-345-0223 or visit the owner online at bryankaiser.me. Contact iCoach today at 713-345-0223 or visit the owner online at bryankaiser.me.
And we're back with Ellen Cohen of District C, council member here in Houston. And we're answering questions from our audience that have been listening and want to know. And the first question is, someone says something about you being a part of the Canadian Ski Patrol. What's that about?
No, they didn't say that. Rumors, otherwise, yes, I was actually on the Canadian Ski Patrol when we lived in Montreal. And what that was about was being frugal, because I really didn't know how to ski until I married Lynn and moved to Montreal. And clearly, you really need to ski. I mean, it's six months of the year, it's cold and snowy up there. But it's expensive.
Yes.
And so I realized that if I learned how to ski well enough and took the courses, I could actually apply and see if I could be accepted to be a Canadian Ski Patrol. And then you didn't have to pay.
Oh.
So you could ski, yes. But you also had to be up there first thing and you had to do what we called swipe the hill at the end. So that meant the sun had gone down and it's now, you know, 40 below zero, and you had to stay on the hill and make sure that nobody was left behind.
Yes.
But it was a way of skiing and, and, and being able to do it without costing me a lot of money.
Yeah, what we do to ski free.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I know. But it was, it was a great experience, it really was. And actually, the most horrific accident that I had to take care of, which fortunately was not that bad, occurred in the parking lot, not on the, not on the ski hill.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, a couple of cars collided into each other.
Oh, my gosh.
But it was okay, nobody was seriously hurt, but...
Well, thank goodness for that.
Yeah.
So are you athletic? Do you enjoy sports?
I do enjoy sports. I do enjoy sports. I like to watch them and I like to play them. And I have very athletic grandchildren who play a variety of sports. And when I, after I moved down here about a year or so, after we were here, I was working out at one of the workout studios. And a woman came over to me and she said, "Would you, do you like to play sports?" And I said, "Yes." She said, "Would you like to play soccer?" I said, "I have, I've never played a game using my feet, so I have no idea." She said, "Well, we're a group of, of more mature women who like to play. And would you like to join us?" And I said, "Sure, that sounds like fun." And my sister was with me at the time, and so I recruited her too. And what's interesting about this is that our first grandchild had been born about six months earlier. And he, he would sleep over at our home on Friday nights and we would have them Friday, have Friday night and Saturday. And the game was on Saturday. And so in my mind, when I close my eyes now, I have a picture of my husband sitting on the sideline under a tree, giving Kevin a bottle while I was running up and down the soccer field. And I thought, you know what? This is what grandmothers look like these days.
Yes.
I mean, that was, it was really, it was amazing. You know, I'm a grandmother and my husband, who was also extremely athletic, but, you know, was happy to do it. But, I mean, he was sitting there, happy as could be, feeding our grandson.
Oh.
So it was great. It was great.
A great thought. Okay, so we have another question, and it comes from Oak Forest, and they wanted to know what's going on with the roads.
Just in Oak Forest?
Well, no, I imagine that that person just lives in Oak Forest, but-
You know what? The mayor has, has actually said, and she said it recently, she said, "Look, the biggest problem we have right now is our infrastructure."
Yeah.
And so it's obviously not just Oak Forest. It's, it's all over the city. We have rebuilt Houston. We are going to be in a position shortly where we don't have to, we weren't borrowing the money to, to take care of the infrastructure. We're going to be in a position that we pay as we go.
That's awesome.
And I would, my hope, and I really believe it, is that in a matter of a couple of years, y'all are going to be complaining to your council member because every street you go down is being ripped up and repaired. You know, I really do. I really think that's, that's what's going to happen. Right now, it's a problem because Houston is growing the way it is. So, you know, in your own neighborhoods, you've got trucks going up and down that are building homes and they're, you know, they're playing havoc with the roads. We've had droughts, so the pipes underneath have burst. I mean, we've had a lot of problems. But I honestly believe that we are on the right path to make sure that we can do it and do it in a fiscally responsible manner.
Yeah, yeah. I'm all for it. I'm all for progress. Another question we have is, what's your stance on the, or opinion on the crime waves that some neighborhoods are experiencing?
Well, I think if, if a crime happens to you, it's serious.
Yes.
If a crime happens to you, if you're held up in your driveway, if you come home at night and clearly someone's ransacked your home, it's a serious issue. What we have are roving groups, as a lot of cities do. A gang of people will be in one neighborhood. We can work, I and my other colleagues can work with the police and we can have an enlarged number of, or an increased, I should say, number of police officers come into that neighborhood. And what that'll do, it will purge the neighborhood of the people who are breaking into your backyard. But instead of being in my neighborhood, they're not going to be in your neighborhood, David.
Right.
And so, yeah, I happen to be your council member.
Right.
But if you lived in a different area, you would call your council member and say, "Look, we've got a problem. We've got a bunch of break-ins." HPD will come out and add staff then, and they'll pick up and move somewhere. The best thing I can say is, and one of the biggest problems we have are break-in in cars. And people absolutely need to make sure that there is nothing visible in a car. This is what the police tell us all the time. Don't have your sunglasses hanging from the rearview mirror. Don't have your laptop, laptop on the seat. If they don't see anything, they'll move to the next car. So that's what you really have to be careful about.
What do you think about some of the neighborhoods that have hired independent security patrols?
I think if that's what they want to do and it works for them, then I think that's a good backup procedure.
There's a lot of communities that are doing that. But it's kind of controversial. So people that are pro it like it and don't necessarily need the statistics. And then there are those that are on the wall that say, "Well, I need to see proof that it's working."
Yeah, exactly. And that's the way it always works. The fact of the matter is, Houston is growing, as we talked about before. And keeping up, public safety is our biggest expenditure. And keeping up, in other words, recruiting enough and training enough police officers and firefighters is a problem. So, you know, we've got to increase the number of cadets in our classes. And to do that, we have to be able to have the funds to do it. So I think neighborhoods have to decide for themselves what they want to do.
Right. My neighborhood, Oak Forest, has SEAL Patrol.
Yes.
And I think it's working out really well. But anyway, so the next question is, is what are some of the biggest things or calls that you get in your office from your constituents?
Well, from constituents, they're the, they're the quality of life calls. I mean, I actually serve as Chair of Quality of Life in general, but they are the quality of life calls. They're the calls about, about, just what we were talking about, about a pothole, about garbage collection, about concerns over water pipes, about everything, about an odor that's coming up from a sewer, the things that keep the city moving every day. I mean, as the mayor once said, if the, let's see, if the water runs and the commodes flush, then we're doing the right thing. So, you know, the, I mean, really, these are the kinds of issues that, that our office gets. I mean, after all, there are 11 district council members and five at-large council members. So the district council members get the calls that affect the quality of life of their, of our constituents every day.
Now, what's the difference between calling your office and 311?
Well, if you have an issue, right away, you call 311. That's what you do. And 311 really works.
Yes, they do.
And they will give you a routing number. And they will say to you, "Look, we'll get that fixed by Thursday."
Yeah.
Now, two things can happen. One, you can then call my office and say, "Council Member, I've just placed a call to 311. This is my routing number and it's a problem. And they've told me that by Thursday, they're going to fix it." And we'll probably say, "Great, you know, call us by Thursday if it hasn't, if it hasn't been fixed." And then we will act as your advocates as well to make sure that it does get done.
So call you if it's persistent.
Yes, but call 311. That's, and I'm really glad you mentioned that. Call 311 because that is the best way to get your concern noted and taken care of.
Now, something that just popped into my mind, and that is, oh, my neighborhood happens to be one of the neighborhoods that has those large recycling bins. When do you think that's going to go citywide?
Well, it's almost citywide now.
Is it?
Yeah, it really will be. I think in another year, everyone's going to have them.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
And will they be, well, I think that they have just expanded what they collect because they didn't used to collect glass and now they-
Well, now that's, it's, we have one or the other. Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Which is amazing. So to be honest-
But I mean, that's, see, those are the kinds of questions we do get. We'll get, or somebody's bin's missing. You know, you know, it didn't make it, and somebody took it or, you know. So these are the kinds of concerns. And you're concerned about, and I, about garbage collection in your neighborhood. And you're probably, I bet you're, you're an environmentalist and I bet you also separate your glass from-
I do because-
Yeah.
Because my, my green bin is more full than my regular trash.
And, and what you're experiencing in, in your neighborhood is the same thing that we experience throughout the entire district.
Yeah. And I think it's a great thing that we're doing. We're certainly late than a lot of other places, but I'm so glad we're doing it now.
Right.
And so thank you for your help with that, if you were a part of it.
If you're happy with it, I was part of it.
There you go.
If you're not happy with it, I wasn't part of it.
There you go. Yes, I like that. Well, is there's any kind of mantra or philosophy that you like to live by or tell your grandkids or your children, or any kind of saying that you have?
I don't know that I have a mantra. I just believe that if you have a passion, you need to follow it.
Yes.
And if you follow it, others, others will join in if they share that same, that same passion.
That's powerful.
It's wonderful way to live your life.
It really is.
To live out your passion.
And clearly you do. By all the things that you've done, awards, jobs, family, you have a lot to be proud of.
And I have a lot to be blessed.
Yes. And so congratulations on that. I want to thank you for coming by and sharing your story with us.
I want to thank you, David. You were one of the best interviewers I've ever had.
Well, thank you. I want to give out your email address-
Please do.
-because we've been thinking about it. And it's districtc@houstontx.gov. That's districtc@houstontx.gov if you want to email the, the Office of Council Member Ellen Cohen. And I want to remind people to tune in next Wednesday when we're back to our regular time at noon, when we have the lovely morning anchorwoman Courtney Savala of KPRC. And she'll come and talk to us about how she made it happen. And once again, thanks, Ms. Cohen, for coming by and telling us your story about how you made it happen. And just don't sit there. Make it happen.